He just said absent today.
Oh, absolutely.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Colorado in the springtime. Where we get on most of our sun. This is a work session. Work sessions are usually somewhat informal. We have two items on the agenda. And we're gonna switch out item one, put that to item two and vice versa. Our presenter on our first item is running late. So we ask to Kimberly Reed, R3 Corporation, read a rehabilitation facility?
Yes ma'am, here.
Come on, come on down.
Good afternoon, everybody. How are you today?
Good.
Thank you guys so much for allowing us to be here and taking the time to put us on the docket. I'm Kimberly Reed with R3 Corporation, also a company called Hope in the Valley. And my business partners and associates, this is Justin, Miss Paul. And I am actually gonna have Justin come up here and do a brief intro. He's our CEO. And collecting a little bit of a background on our organizations and any other secrets.
Awesome. Thank you, Kimberly.
Of course.
Thank you all so much for letting us be here. As Kimberly said, my name is Justin McBrady. And really, our definition of success today is to listen and learn and benefit here in the community. We've had some great success in helping people in Alamosa and throughout the United States. But we've come across an opportunity to purchase a property in Trinidad. But before we even pursue that project, we really believe in a community-led approach. And so before we come in, you know, drive down from where we live in Denver metro area and say, "This is what we think the community should do and this is what we think the community needs." It's to just pause and take a deep breath and introduce ourselves and let you know a little bit about us, but also provide a platform for you to ask us questions about our nonprofit organization and how we help people in or seeking recovery from substance use disorder, mental health services. And we believe that the property that we've identified would be a great way for us to first focus on a group home because we know that it's gonna be zoned as such. And we don't have an intention of coming in and changing anything as much as leveraging that property to help as many people as possible. And so to give you a real-life example of what we talk about help and what a success story can look like, I'm gonna turn it over to my business partner, Paul Reed. And he's gonna tell you a little bit about his journey in the San Luis Valley. And I can then come back up and answer any questions, or Kim can. And we also have Commissioner Lasky from Alamosa also here with us today to tell you a little bit about what the process has been like so far. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Paul Reed. I grew up in the San Luis Valley, particularly Sanford, Colorado, which is where I grew up. Was born and raised there, eventually moved to Alamosa. So when I was roughly about the age of 25 or so, I really kind of fell into the old, I was in construction and roofing in particular, and kind of fell into that world of drinking and eventually drugs and took me down a pretty dark path. Fortunately, I got sober when I was 33 years old, which is coming by about 17 years ago. I consider myself very lucky, very blessed to be able to do that. When I got, made the decision to get sober, I was in a pretty bad position of, what do I do now? Growing up in Alamosa, staying in Alamosa, I knew that if I went to a rehab, I could start kind of my life. But what do I do day 31? That was the issue. And back then and still so currently, not so much anymore, we've really kind of helped grow this community out. There was nowhere for me to go or really that community to help support my journey in recovery. And so I had to make the decision that I couldn't go back home. And so I stayed in Denver, started working in Denver, and you know, eventually owned a roofing company. That's a very large roofing company. And with that, we've been able to really start to give back. And as you can tell, we have a super high passion of community and giving back to the community because at one time, as Justin will share, because he's a, he's personal long-term recovery as well. If it wasn't for people sticking their hand out and helping us get up, we wouldn't be here today. And so there's kind of a motto that we have in our part of recovery, which is, "We can't keep what we have unless we're willing to give back." And so that's really the whole basis of what we do. We eventually started what was called Roofers in Recovery, which is a national 501(c)(3) that we send men and women all across the country to rehab. Because, let's face it, generally when someone has an issue, they're probably not in a place where they can afford to go, nor do they have insurances and things like that. So there's really nowhere to go. So when I went to rehab, I was able to luckily get in through a lot of help from family, maxing credit cards out, a scholarship, all these different things. So we truly have a passion to give back. And that's, that's our objective, is to help men and women that are suffering and give them a hand, let them know that, hey, there is a way. Look at me today, with what we've been able to do with their life. And we've been able to break, you know, really kind of the bonds. You know, I think that there's generational, I'm not gonna say curses, but there's generational issues that if we can stop today, will change the whole scape of, of the community. And that's, that's our goal. So I'm gonna turn it back over to Ms. Lasky.
Yeah, let's go, Lori. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Lori Lasky. I'm an Alamosa County Commissioner. But I'm actually wearing two hats here today. I'm also the Chair of the Opioid Settlement Governance Council. As we all know, a while back, some funding went to individual counties and municipalities to work on trying to abate this opioid issue. So today, what I wanted to share with you is really what I think is most important about our partnership that we've had, is this team's commitment to the community. I worked every day with people in Denver and all over. And all I hear is, "I can't," or "you don't have the population, we can't do this." And it became really frustrating to me, being in the San Luis Valley in Alamosa County, and seeing the needs that we had in our area, but being overpassed all the time when we needed it. I was so fortunate that just about a year ago, we started working with Roofers in Recovery and Hope in the Valley. And I can tell you, they're amazing. Every time I call up, instead of hearing, "Well, that's not my area," or "we'll get back to you," they tell me, "We're on it. We'll get this taken care of." And I can tell you, we partnered with them on a building. And in a year, just a little bit over a year, they are opening our very first residential treatment facility in Alamosa County. And when you have that community commitment and you have that partnership, that is something that is not out there every day. And hope that you value it like we do. And I can tell you, I enjoy working with them on a daily basis. And we are moving towards the future. And we're gonna get this issue abated at one time or another. Thank you.
Thank you. So we would love to open it up to any questions or observations or questions or...
Have a question.
Yes, sir.
Let's talk about relapse. If structure and routine are not an effective approach for recovery, what other metrics would you use for multiple relapses? What other protocols could you use?
That's a good question, Paul. Feel free to jump in as well. But you may have heard the expression before that, "Relapse is a part of recovery." And I think that there's kind of two sides to that perspective. In some ways, we know that individuals like myself, who, you know, I'm celebrating, I'll be celebrating 17 years of long-term recovery this coming August, can sometimes take that information and say, "Hey, relapse is a part of recovery. Like, let me back in. I don't have to follow the rules. I have a substance use disorder." And so what we find is rather than trying to create a structure that demands perfection, is really create a culture that provides individual ability for somebody's program. And so what that could mean is rather than saying, "You just have to go to this meeting 90 days in a row and you'll be perfectly, you know, absent for the rest of your life," you're saying, "Well, maybe it's a combination. Maybe a 12-step community, maybe even an adventure outdoor community like Phoenix or partner with other organizations like Young People in Recovery. Maybe there are things that we can do to really give you multiple tools in your toolbox, rather than saying that there's just one way to be in long-term recovery." And so for us, what that means is, I think one of the, and I'm actually gonna brag on our partners, is one of the things that makes us different is, we're not here coming up with a Justin, Lou, Paul and Kim brand-new way of being in recovery and we're the best. It's actually to say is, there's a lot of ways that people maintain long-term recovery. And so how can we bring resources from all over the country, actually, and bring them to communities like Alamosa, Trinidad, Greeley, wherever it may be, to give community members the best shot at sometimes, at sometimes, resources that are only available exclusively to people that have a ton of resources and live in highly urban areas where there's resources plentiful. So for us, we really partner with a lot of organizations that have frankly been doing what they're doing longer than I've even been in recovery. And we find that over time, the more resources people have, or what they call a treatment incident, which that terminology isn't meant to imply that you have to go to rehab, like 30 days, you know, seven different times to get it. But we know on average, seven different dosages or different types of resources usually is what somebody needs to maintain long-term recovery. So that could look like a sober living and intensive outpatient along with a 12-step community. So we really do believe more is more when it comes to resources.
So are you interrelating the mental health aspect as well as the physical?
A hundred percent. We know that from the research that we have access to, that the, and I'm not a doctor or a counselor and not trying to speak, you know, outside of my lane of competency, but more than 80 to 90% of individuals, we know that there's a range. Somebody like me who has a substance use disorder, 80 to 90% of the time, they also have a co-occurring issue like depression or anxiety. And so those programs can be separate, but they can still be available in a common place.
So I kind of have to add to that. You guys watched Forrest Gump, right? Forrest got up and he said, "I'm not a smart man." That's what I'm gonna say. I'm not a smart man. But I tell you what I know about is community and recovery. I know about those two things. And I think building it out, and I've seen that, I'm living example of building that community. So you can talk about relapse, you do all these things, but I know if we build a base and there's somewhere for them to go and there's some consistency to it. Because one of my issues, I couldn't go back to see my kids because I had committed to doing 90 meetings in 90 days. And so I, not court order or anything like that, but I just committed to doing 90 meetings in 90 days. So I knew that if I was there in Alamosa on Thursday, there wasn't no meeting. So I couldn't, I couldn't even, I couldn't even go back home or do that. So I had to stay in Denver or wherever. So building the community and supporting that, and I think most importantly, is breaking that stigma of addiction and alcoholism. Because here's, here's a fact. It probably affects every single one of us in this entire room. Not just, not just my problem or my issue. Probably everybody in this room, not speaking for you guys, but everyone in this room knows somebody is somehow affected by alcoholism or addiction. But breaking that stigma of stand up, I mean, I run a multimillion dollar company and I get up and I speak in front of literally tens of thousands of people. And one of the first things I say is, "Hey, 17 years ago, I was in a mental hospital and I was in, I was a meth addict, right? And here's where I'm at today." And breaking that stigma with people, doesn't matter who you are, where you come from. I come from Stanford, Colorado, 700 people. This was a big city, meaning Trinidad, where we used to play every regional basketball. I thought we were going to the big city, like we're playing New York, right? But breaking that stigma of showing them, here's somebody I know, that is, that this is where they were and this is where they're today. So the community-led part of it and just breaking that stigma. And, and you know, I'm not about relapse because I don't know if I would ever make it back. So all I know that I could, like, where it goes back, I'm not a smart man. I know about recovery and I could tell them about, it's not part of my program. It shouldn't be part of yours either, so.
Darren, do you have a question?
Yeah, I take it this is gonna be funded by the opioid settlement in some way? There, this group is actually an outside, you know, group that is doing this. I don't know. In Alamosa, in our region, Region 18, we did support financially with a grant to help them get up and running and get it open. The other thing that we do is, in our two-year plan for the opioid settlement funds, we have allocated funds to help with recovery housing. It's a best practice. It's a proven thing. It's, it's something that we've done. So we actually contribute and we help supplement people that are in recovery housing. But the opioid funds are a separate fund. You guys are in Region 19 and you actually have a pretty large region. You go all the way up to Pueblo, to the Kansas border, I think. So those funds can be used for a lot of the things they're doing. And of course, I would always encourage all of those different combinations. So it's not as part of that. I was saying that because I am here to show you that that's my involvement in this realm. As a Commissioner, I also work with roads and all those other things that do. But I'm very passionate about this and it has been a great working relationship. And we did, so we did use funding from the settlements and from the infrastructure fund to support them. I certainly hope so. I don't think that's their task, so I just, but we did. We gave $100,000 out of the infrastructure grant to help with remodeling and that type of thing. And then like I said, we have monies allocated to assist people in recovery housing. We pay a portion of their rent. That happens to be my region, Region 18's plan. I don't know what your plan is.
Well, I, I, I'm hoping that you are going to be able to use some of that funding because when that settlement was announced and they divided us into regions, they put us in Pueblo, I was kind of like, okay, but that means our people have to go all the way to Pueblo. And so that's really hard. I don't believe we have any group home or anything like that for recovery. So it's an enormous need here. And I'm really excited to hear that you're pursuing it. Are you going to work with the local, any of the local agencies such as Health Solutions for referrals? Or how will you find the people?
Go ahead. So, great question.
Justin's the smart man.
No, I just am really passionate about, you know, money and helping people and all the things. I don't know yet. This is our first step. So we don't have a secret list of partners. And now we would hope to continue to build credibility and momentum and say, "Who is the organization you just mentioned?"
Health Solutions.
So we would hope to know who Health Solutions, like, who they are and what they do. And so our intent is really neighboring versus parachuting. So whether it's, when you talk about cross-sector, social partnerships, call whatever you want to. We wanna go outdoors and introduce ourselves and say, "This is what we're thinking of doing. Is this on or off track?" Because different communities do have different priorities or resources. Like, if you would ask me that the first part of the continuum of care that we were to focus on Alamosa was a 3.2 level detox. I don't even know what that means. But I can hire a doctor and they can tell me what that means and they can tell me if that's appropriate. And so our core competency is creating a neutral platform that allows us to take priority needs of the community and help people. And so just, hopefully that answers your question. It's part of our approach.
There are other organizations for sure that you may be aware of, like Keep Trinidad Safe. They do work in this, in this area. And then the court system was involved in a program called, I mean, a group called the Partnership for Drug-Free Community. That's, it's kind of changed its focus since it originally was set up. But the court was definitely involved in that, which, because I'm assuming you would get court referrals for people. Anyways, I just wanna tell you, I'm thrilled. Thank you for showing interest in our city and that's been...
I would like, I'm sorry, I would like to say that any, any information you have with funding, like, that would be great because we are self-funded. The property that we acquired in Alamosa, we self-funded that. Yes, Lori was able to help us with the grant for the $100,000, but we came close to a million of our own money putting into that. And again, it's because we are able to do so. We're very aggressive in getting the dollars needed to help change these communities because it's our passion. So we're not coming saying, "Hey, we're gonna do this based on what you can give us because we're gonna do it regardless, as long as we have your blessing." That's my part in this, to make the things happen because that's what I do, so. Any resources you guys can share with us, send our way and I'll get it done.
I would think, I would say really, as long as you welcome us here and you allow us to be here, we want to be here. We're not with our hands out.
Nope.
We, you know, if we get, we get everyone's blessing, we could do this. We're not here with our hands out. Now, if you see that we're doing great and you have something, you find something that you wanna put towards it, absolutely, let's partner. That's, that would be what we would like to do.
What you're doing is just an enormous need in this community.
Well, we wanna be part of your community. We want all of you guys to be involved with what we're doing because this is a resource for this town, right, for the community. And so you guys have to know exactly where we stand, what we're doing, how things look through this entire process, because it's not just us. It's gonna be all of us, right? And that's how we lift this community and that's our goal, to come here, so.
Thank you.
Frank, do you have a question?
Oh, yeah. We're talking about all this, and you came to see us. What can, what exactly can we do to work with you for a facility? You bought some land. Are you looking for help for us to put it in still? And what kind of a facility are you planning on putting in? I mean, as far as the amount of people that can get in there. We, we've had this issue with police and stuff where they have people that come in with drugs, addiction and stuff, and they have no place to take them. Is this part of a program that we could use with that?
Yeah, so we can go down the line because each of us is gonna have something to add to that. I wanna say that, yes, our, our purpose is of coming in right now with this project that we're looking at with this home that we're gonna buy. It's a transitional housing. It's a group home to put people in, to show them a better way to live, to teach them a better way to live, to get them integrated back into society, working in local jobs, things like that. That is our goal with this property. Now, we have other things we wanna meet with you on for other projects that we would like to do, but one thing at a time, obviously. So I'll let these two kind of go over.
So my, my experience in living like in a, in a group home, I'll speak on that really quickly, is I lived in a group home for six months in Colorado Springs back in 2007. And what it did was, it taught me a little bit of structure. Sorry. Excuse me. It taught me structure, manners, way to live, way to live with other people, all those different things. And I do credit it for me being here today. And so with that, I'll turn it to...
So the question is really what, what we're asking for today. And so one is buy-in and support. And it sounds like, it sounds like, you know, Trinidad is not immune to the opioid epidemic. And there are people here that need help, whether it's alcoholism or drug addiction or mental health services. And if we're allowed to, for lack of a better term, you know, start forging community connections and work here, that would be phenomenal, to see you in town and know you by name and come up with ideas on how we can help more people in Trinidad and the appropriate surrounding areas. Similar to that, which is a little bit different than Alamosa, is we have an opportunity, as Kim and we've shared, to, we've already identified a building where we could start. Now, if I were to wave a magic wand and have our second or third meeting, we give you a great update on progress we're making in the first building that we've identified. But maybe there is property in Trinidad, similar to what happened in Alamosa, where you own property that's sitting empty. And why not use that space to provide more recovery support services? And that's different parts of the continuum. So I don't know if Trinidad has a 3.2 detox. Maybe you need one, maybe you don't, right? So that's, our approach is to make sure it's community-appropriate. But if there are opportunities for you to say, "We have some assets on our books that we own free and clear that they're not producing not only a return on investment financially, but they're not really producing a return on impact." And if there's a group out there that really specializes in taking commercial property or even, you know, specific residential property and using that to help people, maybe there's a win-win. Or then we can have an additional conversation about the way that that real estate transaction was structured. I think we're all at open book about that.
Yep.
But we're open to creatively working with you to bring resources to your community. But today, we're not asking for, we're certainly not asking for a free building. And we're not even asking to have you tell us what buildings you have that you would sell us. We just, we just wanna introduce ourselves to you first and foremost, if that answers your question.
Right, yeah, basically. And then, are you looking for, I mean, size facility, something that, where you would have five, six people, seven? We have Alcohol Anonymous program. That's, that's really good. I mean, I can tell you that because I have a couple of boys that were problems. And they did real well with that program. And we do have a detox, but they were only there for short-term.
Sure.
So that makes it kind of a problem. So we really would like to have a, a place where we can take these people and do that. And are you looking for, like, timeline with, are you pretty much got the building that you were talking about?
I would say, a deal's not done until it really is done.
Okay.
So if that deal isn't done, I mean, our first step to even making an offer officially on that, on that facility, which is currently a bed and breakfast here in town, is to make sure that you know who we are and what we're doing. So as it relates to other levels of care outside of a group home, to give you just a comstat, it's a 6,300 square foot building.
Yes.
And that's gonna provide a 10-bed, 3.2 detox, a up to 10 to 20 IOP-PHP, which is intensive outpatient, partial hospitalization, think group therapy. You go there almost every day, but you don't live there. And then in addition to that same 6,300 square foot building, we can also have anywhere between 10 to 18 residential beds. So we know how to do, you know, quite a lot with 6,300 square feet.
And do you have people that are available to work? I mean, that seems to be a problem I was finding, invite people to run the programs that will live here. Or how do you work that? Do you hire people that are in the house?
Only people from out of state, no issue.
Only that can work.
So we've been very, very fortunate. I think with this genuine approach to say, you know, we want it for the community, by the community. And so as it stands now, we have a litany of staff that are from Alamosa, like, nobody even from Salida or Sowatch or anywhere. And so we've just been really, just to be frank, is we've been very fortunate and lucky that people have really come to end of the vision that we have and wanna work here. So we would hope that they would all be local people from Trinidad.
Commissioner Thompson, I had the same exact question about 18 months ago. I said, "All I hear is our lack of being, being able to get in the kind of workers that we need, just building it, and they've been able to do it." And I'm kind of more of, "Don't talk about it. Just get it done and show me and then I will believe you." And they've done it. They've hired an amazing doctor out of the Rio Grande Hospital in Del Norte that is working with them. And like I said, I'm on the peripheral. I, my job is separate. But they've done it. And what more can you ask for when I'm sitting in like your position and people have these ideas? I'm here to say that when they say they're gonna do it, they do it. And that's what I can contribute. But I had the same exact question about a year and a half ago. And they did it. Thank you.
So to add to your question, or add to my answer of your question, the home that we are in the process of hopefully purchasing, we are gonna be able to facilitate 25 people in that home. And that's what your question was. So yes, 25, 25 people at a time, so.
One thing I wanna add that, till Lori really got to know us and seeing who we were and what our vision was, when we start talking about it, it's like, it can be very exciting, like, hey, we've come in here to like really make a difference. And if it was left up to me, we would start tomorrow and it'd be open and there's, we're helping 25 people tomorrow. Our intention is going to be sustainability. The worst thing that could possibly happen is for us to stand here in front of you guys today and talk about this and we get excited and we open up something next week. Our intention is to be very methodical about it and set it up to where this is going on well past that any of us are, are around.
You guys, so you know these name tags are incorrect.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. It's okay. I'm sorry. So these are council members, and we have council members Ogul, Trejo, Debo, Shu, May, Criago and Trahio.
Great.
So sorry.
How may I do? I'm so sorry. Okay, it might seem nasty. My husband grew up in Aguilar, so maybe I'm pretty...
Sorry about that.
I didn't even notice.
And you said to be frank.
I know, you splashed your body, didn't you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. I wanted everyone to know why she said, "Commissioner Thompson." I know, that's right.
Well, okay. Mr. Trejo, do you have any questions?
Actually, just, well, one question. When does your, your program mostly serves adults, right?
Yes.
Is, but do you, in the future, do you foresee a youth program? Because that our community's been asking for youth education and, you know, to combat addiction. You know, if that would be something foreseeable in the future later, if that would be, one of your goals would be amazing. Also, our community's just been crying for this. They really need it and wanting it. And we do. We really need this in our area. And I'm looking forward to you bringing your program here. And I think it'll make a massive difference, you know, just educating and breaking that cycle over and over. So I appreciate you guys coming in. Thank you for the work that you do. I know in Alamosa, it is working well. I know I've talked to Director Salazar. And we've kind of, I've kind of mentioned, we were talking about it and she had said that there was a program coming in and it was doing well. So thank you very much. I appreciate you coming.
So we are doing meetings over there as well. So that is in addition to what we're doing, we can bring the meetings... So we are doing meetings over there as well, so that is in addition to what we're doing, we can bring the meetings as well. As far as youth, that is, I mean, again, this is a group effort. So that could be another meeting, if you wanna sit down with us once we get everything going, then absolutely, anything is possible once we're here, so.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I think maybe it does not work unless we have a partnership with the community. It just, it doesn't work because we'll be looked at as, you know, these outsiders from Denver, right? Came in, they're trying to do this, that's not us. Where we wanna work with the community, the community leaders. And that's really how we'll make a difference. We're not gonna make a difference alone, we have to work together on it.
I have observations, not really questions, because we're just in the very, very preliminary stages of this project. But, you know, some things somewhat concern me. And I know you said the property is already zoned commercial, correct? So you don't have a problem with that?
It's zoned residential, but it's also been okayed as a group home. I called and made sure with the zoning division in Trinidad that we were able to do something like this before having the meeting with you folks and before even discussing with the owner of the property, so that we were able to make this transaction if it's available. And they gave me the okay for a group home because it is residential.
Okay. I just, you know, there's a stigma to businesses. I'm preaching to the choir for sure. I just want you to be aware that that might be an issue that you face. And, you know, I'm not the town crier, but, you know, I've been involved in nonprofits. And just because you're doing a good thing and doing a good house, not everybody's behind your bandwagon, but, you know, I echo with everybody else. This is something we absolutely need in Trinidad. With the Region 19 opioid settlement, is there any restrictions on that, Commissioner? That would allow just one entity per capita of? And what I'm getting at is Councilman Ogletree mentioned that we have a smaller group called Keep Trinidad Safe here. Would there be any jeopardizing of that organization and their objectives as to if this organization would come in? As far as?
I'm not sure about the question, so let me go back. And in full transparency, I also sit on the COACT, which is the Colorado Opioid Debate Committee, I'll be appointed to that. Which is weird, because five years ago, I was not in this arena at all. I was in education, so I'm learning. As far as each of the regions, it is up to the regions as long as they are doing what is set aside in the certain agreement, in the MOU. In our area, we have all of our partners at the table. When we have a meeting of our council, we have our SLV Behavior Health, we have our MAP program, we have our detox program. We have all of them coming to the table together. So it's really up to the region of how they do it. You guys have a fairly large region, we pulled out of it. We, so that we, because we're kind of geographically surrounded by mountains. So ours is different. Now, I work with your regional people. I don't see it as a competition, I see it as a complement.
Okay.
In fact, even in our area, we have a detox that is operating, and they have no concerns. They're excited that we have another detox. Because I can tell you about a year ago, my sheriff's department was coming to me because detox was booked, and we had nothing. And then we are tying up our emergency rooms for the detoxing process. So at least in my area, they're very excited to have the support. It's sad to say that we have that much demand, but we have the demand to do that. So I've never felt that it's in competition. And what I'm seeing on our side is it's very much a marrying and complimenting them. They've been together, this group has offered open houses, they've invited all of those providers that we have throughout to come in and work with them. So I think it's working well and moving forward. And I can tell, I wanted to share a story. I told you my husband grew up in Aguilar, and I was here just about a year ago because I get a little choked up. I had a young man, that was my husband's best friend's son, and he died from fentanyl overdose under your overpass. And he was 27 years old. And it was one of the saddest things because he was 27 and he had so much more to give. But even worse, at the funeral, his family did show up because he had broken all of those relationships. And so when we're in the rural areas like this, we have that need just as much as anywhere else. But sometimes we get lucked out on the services that can be used. And so I'm not sure if I answered your question because I can't answer for Region 19. I would hope they would support it. There is funding there, they foresee that funding. If you have questions, I probably didn't bring my cards, but let me know. I would be happy to reach out to your region to see what they could do. But I don't see it as competition. I would guess they would probably complement.
Okay, thank you.
I'm thinking, I think it's Commissioner Lopez, Felix Lopez, who's the one who's our regional contact there. So that's someone that definitely you all would wanna talk with. And Marcy Key at Keep Trinidad Safe is part of the Community Coalition.
Yes.
Creating the Change, which is what the Partnership for a Drug-Free Community used to be called, and they meet on a monthly basis. And they do have everybody at the table there. So it would be definitely important for you to be there.
I think it's an organization, maybe you would be well to come and contact me.
Okay. And that's kind of what we did in Alamosa, it was like Lori was saying. We reached out to everybody that was currently there and said, here's what we're doing, we're coming to your community, you guys are already here, but we wanna partner with you guys. So now, everybody that was already there, they're gonna use us as overflow, we're gonna use them as overflow. We've all come together, because we all have the same common goal. And so now we're all a team, and so it is a great marriage with everybody in that whole arena. So it's definitely a blessing.
Thank you.
Mayor, could I please?
Yes.
I'd just like to ask, and I want to just clarify, the applicator, your organization, is R3 Corp? And can I please ask you, I mean, what is your, what are your individual capacities in R3 Corp, if I may? And you guys, it was a great presentation, and thank you, I echo everything you said by council. But like, what are your capacities with R3 Corp?
We're all co-founders.
Okay.
I'm the chairman and CEO of the organization. Kim is co-founder and development director. And Paul is vice chair of the board of directors, and also heads all of our recovery support services.
Thank you. And it's a nonprofit organization?
But we're all officers of varying capacities.
Just wanna mention.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
Mayor, thank you.
Thank you for coming down in this.
Yes.
It's very greatly appreciated.
I just had a couple of quick questions.
Oh, okay.
So I just wanted to ask, so last year we had Attorney General Phil Weiser visit our community, and he was very passionate about trying to help identify resources to help us with exactly what you are talking about. So just curious, do you guys work directly with the AG's office?
I work with Phil, yes.
Okay, good.
So when I acquired the property down in Alamosa, Phil actually drove down and came to see the property, and we talked. And so he's kind of behind the scenes on this whole deal, which is wonderful.
That's awesome.
He does not know what we're doing here yet, but he will, I'll be putting a call to meet with him. So yeah, he's behind this 100%.
Great, and we feel like he's very supportive of our community, so glad to hear that. Just to follow up on the question on, so someone goes through the detox as an inpatient, what does the follow-up look like after? Does the facility serve as some sort of a day resource center for people who can need to continue to get some help after they're out of detox?
To clarify your question, for what we do today, what we're envisioning here in Trinidad.
What you're envisioning here in Trinidad.
Yeah, so what we would envision here long-term, which may, you know, we're ambitious, so that could be a few years or it could be several. But long-term is we really hope to have an entire continuum of care. So that would mean, you know, the tricky thing is, is the recovery process is not always linear. It isn't always, okay, well, you need three days of detox and, you know, four weeks of IOP and maybe. So people kind of bounce around. And so our hope is over time, is we would create recovery-specific programs that were really customized to what that individual needed. So myself, I needed to live in a homeless shelter for about two years, actually, to get a good jumpstart on my own personal recovery journey. And that was my seventh program that I've been to. My dad, who's in 15 years of long-term recovery, and he's very open about that, so not blowing his anonymity, is a little stinker. He never went to a program ever. He, I mean, I think it's because he went to all of the family days of rehab that, you know, if you haven't heard the message. But truly, he didn't have to go through the same process. He was able to find a 12-step community that supported him, and we literally still to this day, you know, do peer recovery support services. We do a step study, my dad and I, and help each other stay sober. And so it really depends on what that individual's family needs.
So that answers my third question then. So if someone is identified or referred or reaches out to you on their own, you all go through a process of helping them identify what's best course of action.
Absolutely.
Good, and then the last thing I wanted to just let you guys know, as you move forward, we've started a pretty robust coalition to deal with homelessness in our community. And one of the best things about that process is connecting a lot of our support nonprofits and having more dialogue and interconnection between those groups. And so I think that would be a good resource for you guys as well to know the resources we already have that we refer people to that we partner with you all on this project here. So thank you for coming, appreciate it.
That's a good idea, Steve, because Sergeant Detective Lay would be a great contact for you.
Absolutely. So we can get her in contact with you all as you move forward.
Thank you, Mayor.
All righty.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, for coming.
Yeah, thanks. You guys aren't in there.
Yeah, right.
I wear many hats.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Safe travels.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second item on our agenda is Main Street Live.
Does this ask? Okay, I'm here. Hi. Hi, Mayor. Counsel, one second, I need to light this phone up so I can read to you and not forget. I have to just tell you, without blowing the whistle on anybody, that my whole life has been spent in 12-step. Because I came from a family of alcoholics. Great, amazing people in New York City. And we didn't have a normal day, ever. So I went into Al-Anon when I was 16, and I'm 65. So anything that we can do to bring 12-step, and I still attend Zoom meetings. So I'm glad to hear. It was perfect that I address you today. So I wanted to give you a very brief but exciting update on the theater. Hi, beautiful you, and hi, Thurman. Because we just, I don't have time to talk to you, and I want you to hear things from me. And not from Facebook, and not from email letters, but from my mouth. So we have just been awarded four different grants. And this was really great. The theater goes through, or when I took the theater over, what we were seeing is real enthusiasm and then nothing. So this, maybe you're looking to be like, really? But I just had my hair done for you. Yeah, in the snow. So we got a series of four different grants. And I've been asked to go to the county commissioners April 4th to address them, Felix and everybody. And I'll, I don't know if I'll be able to do that, but we've had a pocket of little, 1,500, 2,000. The tax advisory board advised, I asked for 20,000, they gave us five, and I'm still pumping for more, you know. But that all came through. We had Theater Week that was sponsored by Mount Carmel. We had 25 kids in there. And if you haven't seen them, tap dancing, writing stories, doing monologues, getting dressed up, and four teaching artists from our school district, and Sky Tallman, an incredible teacher. And they were all paid very well per hour, plus they were paid for preparation. And this makes me really proud because I fought for that. No, we are not going to give $10 an hour to a teaching artist, not while I'm here. So it was great. Look at all of their work, the kids voted on having all of that put forward on social media. So it's out there. I've created something called the New Chef Project. The New Chef Project actually goes into restaurants in Trinidad with young sous chefs and chefs that don't get any focus. And I take them the list of shows for the year. They pick something, they create a menu, they get paid $500, plus they shop and they prepare, and that becomes our dinner theater. And it's focusing on them, their restaurants, and I've gone to cannabis. You know, that's an interesting thing, going from shop to shop. I just walk out there going, yes, anything is possible! But, and I've been trying to focus on the young chefs, focus on their restaurant, and focus on the cannabis industry gently, because they've lost so much ground. The thing I'm running into trouble with, just so you know, is they have a 71% rule. So they cannot put money behind the young chef if the people attending the dinner theater are not 71% adult. So I've run up against some things there. But right now, Native Roots is working with me, and I have to hit that side of Trinidad this week. But I think it's really important. A lot of our restaurants are saggy during this time, and this has really caught them on fire. And so I'm very happy about that, and I'm gonna keep up with that because it looks like it's taken off. Directors Exchange, I just want you to love this. Directors Exchange is people on Broadway that direct and LA that do Hollywood. And I have asked them to come here to Trinidad after August and do a weekend with our actors, with our folks in Trinidad that can audit, with our directors. And I already have one, Randy McDonald, who's done 35 different plays on Broadway, is coming after August, and Leonardo Fotti with Seven Waves in L.A. He was my director for In Vino, if you haven't seen that insane movie that I made with Ed Asner. Anyway, they're coming here to just do a weekend with people in the theater that would like some inspiration. So that's a yes, and I'll get sponsors for that, period. Because they will work for nothing because they wanna connect to rural. So I'm just saying that that. Our fundraiser is April 13th, I hope you'll all be a part of it, 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. And it starts up there at Holiday and Express, and it goes all the way to the marketplace. It's a progressive dinner, so bring your horse, bring your Jeep, bring your car. And all of that was donated, and all of that will 100% go to the theater because it has been 100% sponsored. So just letting you know on that. I have the last couple of things. I am, right now, I have been approached by the NEA to be a grant reader for all of their grants, and I've accepted that, and I will be hearing about that because that will give me more visibility on the NEA, National Endowment for the Arts, and it will help set us up, whatever I can bring to Trinidad, you know, which I'm. And our concert series is now fully sponsored by the marketplace. It starts in May with Apache Creek players, the Fiddlers, do you guys know them? They've never been here really in concert, that's May 18th. And then Krista, who owns the Trinidad Tea Company, and Todd are doing their first real concert, September 14th, the day of my birthday. And Jackie Gibson, Wilson and McKee were a huge thing to come back on November 16th. Why? Because people wanted more than blues. So I gave them that, and we're done. So, final thing, and I wanted you to hear it from me.
Okay, you're done.
Okay. Bye! How could you do that?
I don't wanna hear what you have to say, right?
Yeah, well, I wanted you to know from me what's going on at the theater. So here's the other thing. So here's the other thing. So on Friday, I will be rebasing to New York City. I moved out of Trinidad and I will be working remotely for the theater. What I did is I gave the board, so I wanted this council who has supported me and I have supported this city. Because I've told everyone from the beginning, you cannot go up against the city and think that we are going to succeed. You have to come together. The arts and the city are one thing. You may not like what they do, but we can work together. So I wanted you to hear from me. I gave my board five weeks. I told them I will work remotely full-time. You fly me in for all our events. It's cheap. It's $275 to get me here. And I've got friends, right? I was paying on two apartments and that is not affordable to me. And it's something, people are asking me, why am I rebasing? I need to be performing as well as leading. And I was also honestly running into people not letting me fully lead. And there's only so much I can do. And then you don't feel like you're creating. You feel like you're being told what to do, but I'm an executive director. The other thing that's in New York, which comes straight to Trinidad, is that I've been asked to work with a foundation called Stage Door. And that pulls talent from rural communities. So everything that I'm doing here hooks straight to Stage Door. And they're all Broadway people. And we have talent in Trinidad that may never see New York. And that's what Stage Door Foundation is all about. Which is going into rural places and getting that talent to New York 100% subsidized. And that's what I would be a part of. So, and then Jacob's Pillow International Dance Festival. Audrey's like, you don't dance? And I'm like, yes, I do. I funk dance, but I've had a huge.
You're a wild one.
I know.
Oh, yeah, you funk dance.
Baby, just wait. Anyway, Jacob's Pillow is in Beckett, which is right above New York City. And they deal with young talent and dancers. And they're international. And my scope from my dad, West African dance, Bela Lewitsky, Martha Graham, that's my heritage. So they have been talking to me about doing philanthropy and bridging rural talent. So it's like I'm poised at a really great point. So that's why I'm rebasing. I'm not leaving and I didn't resign. So I want you to hear it from me because my board is saying that I resigned. What I said is I wouldn't re-up for another year, but I would go month to month and work for them as long as they needed me. So now you know, from my mouth to your heart, that's what is going on. Anything else would be poo.
I'm glad you said rebasing and not pre-basing.
Yes, I am. Well, pre-basing is a part of rebasing, but. So anyway, that's where I leave the theater. As far as, I take three days. I arrive in New York on Easter and both Jesus and I raise on the same day. So you all let me know, what, do you have any questions? I still have all my emails. I will be doing videos. I will be posting to the Trinidad chat or all of that. Do you have anything for me? Because I just, I just want to thank you because I love all of you, even you, Frank. And we haven't gone to coffee, right? And I know you, but you don't know me that well. And Mayor Griego.
You know all my cousins, though.
I know, all your 100 cousins. It's very incestuous. I hate the whole thing. And there's Krushman, Les, and Audrey the Beautiful.
We love you.
I love you too.
I hope this isn't, you know, the beginning of the end.
No, no, I don't see it that way. But this is why I wanted to address you. I'm sorry I was late last Tuesday. I worked really late at the theater. But I just wanted you to know, number one, what's going on that's great? And number two, what's the truth? And just call me if you have a question, please, you know. And I'll stay in touch with Mayor Griego and Erin, how did you say, Councilwoman Erin?
Erin.
I'm blessed across that. And Mr. Rooker and Andra. And you, Thurman, beautiful you.
Interview's over the phone.
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly what I'm doing. Annie, did you want to say?
Thank you. Thank you for bringing your energy. Thank you for everything that you do for us since you've come to town. Like we awoke our theater industry here and we really do appreciate.
Thanks.
And I hope it goes longer than just what we're saying. That you can actually keep continuing and continuing.
And I'll ask you all for a service. Lean onto that board at the theater. Because accountants and IT people are fabulous, except if there's no balance and they think that that way is the right way, then we lose everything. And I'm only one person, even though I have the energy of 10, I've been told. But when it comes to art, do you know, so you all, you all have that. You have the authority to lean there and say, let's, you know, let's keep the doors open. Do you know? And I'm open. So just to let you know. Frank?
No, just thank you.
Thank you.
I wish you didn't have to go. I mean, maybe you'll come back.
Well, you know what? The other thing I want to do, Frank, is I want to book a Broadway show. And then when you come to see me on Broadway, there we are from Trinidad, Colorado, right? And Felix Lopez and I, when he was the president, we developed tours to New York from Trinidad. And we already were talking about this, do you know? So that we could set up 10, bring 10 in because I'm also a New York tour guide. And that takes a lot to get that license. And then we could just set you up and, do you know, I mean, there's a lot. But thank you for thanking me.
No, thank you very much. Thank you to the Yankee game. That's right.
That's going to be part of the tour, Broadway and Yankee Stadium.
Okay, good. Well, I don't know any of the Yankees, but I can know them. Thank you both. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ellie.
Sure.
For everything, all the 20 interviews or so that we've been.
Thank you.
Go ahead. The four programs that you discussed that are, I am assuming were grant-driven, who will be in charge of those when you are here?
I will. So I'm going to keep giving the Directors Exchange, the New Chef Project. So what I, again, what I told the board is it very simply, you find the right person, I will come and train them. And I'm having a meeting with the head of the board tomorrow to list the three pages of things I've got going. And if they think they're going to, they're going to easily supply somebody that can do all that, I said, you may not, but I will come back and train them because I know what's going on when it comes to that. And then I also have a new consulting business, which you all can hit me up about. It's called Force of Nature Arts Consulting. And I told the board about that. So they'll be trained, Erin. They, I won't, I'm not leaving anybody destitute at all.
I didn't.
It's not turn your back and shake your dust and out like Jesus. No, no. I'm totally 100% committed.
Great.
Jesus is on my mind less because of these.
No, no, it's great. It's great. We get in trouble if we say anything like that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I know.
It's fine. You're not going to get in trouble.
Well, I'm excited. I have to go to New York in May for a wedding and I'm going to meet with Allison. She's going to give me a tour.
We're going to go to Broadway. We're going to go to Columbia University. We're going to go to St. John the Divine. So you all, and I have a two-bedroom apartment, which is as big as this. So you all can sleep here, but you're welcome anytime. Please, that's not BS. That's really, please, come and I will come back to Trinidad. I don't see it as that. Yeah?
You're leaving such a dynamic force in this community.
Yeah.
I do really hope, good things for that board, that they recognize all that you've done and can continue the work when you're not here technically.
Yeah. So, well. I'm open and I hope they do too.
Have you been good?
No.
Yeah.
You know, for me personally, especially in the position that we're in all the time. Just seeing you again, wherever I see you, it could have been a happy occasion, a sad occasion, a religious occasion, but just seeing you just brightened my day. You're that kind of person, you know? And not to be able to see you physically in Trinidad is going to, it's going to be a big hurdle for me. But I'm so glad that you're going to hang on and continue with the theater because I cannot believe the turnaround that that theater has, has gone through since you started.
Oh, thank you.
It's light day and night. It's like day and night.
Thank you for saying it, Mayor.
No, I looked at the Facebook page and I saw the tap dancers.
Yeah.
It was amazing.
Yeah. And that was Halle Baca.
I know.
And Halle Baca's from Trinidad.
I know.
And nobody would touch her because she has a weight problem.
Yes.
She won a tap dancing concert and went to New York and danced with the Rockettes, where I used to do Mrs. Claus. And I hired her and she taught all those kids.
I saw those. But I mean, just when you're talking about all of the projects, I mean, it's mind-boggling. And there is no way, thank you is enough to say how much I appreciate you. Pizzazz is gone.
Well, no, no, it's not. It means I'm going to hit you up on video.
Well, okay.
Hello, Mayor Griego, because I will do that.
Please do it. You know where, you know, you have my phone numbers.
I do. I've got your cell number.
Yes, you do.
So Frank, I don't have yours. And I know where you cut heads. So.
Wonderful.
You know, do you remember the first time that Allison sat in the audience?
Yes, I do.
She had a Russian sable hat on and a green jacket and.
Thanks for remembering that. I have that in my car, but I can't tap you just in my hair. And I'm like, I can't address Council Mayor in a hat. Not when I just in my hair.
Yeah, first impressions.
Yeah.
That was a great first impression.
I remember that night too. It was a heavy night, you know? And I came up and just said, hello.
Wrong.
No, what did I say?
Hello.
Well, I love you all and I know that many of you are close to me. Some of you are far from just acquaintances, but we're one heart and one spirit and I feel that. So I'm here and I'll be here, you know? And whatever the board decides, it's just a board. God's first, you guys, in my book, and that's driving this. So.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Safe travels.
Yeah, thank you.
Showing ample enough.
Yeah. She can't take her cats.
In the house, we only have two each.
That's all. It was a good meeting.
Wanted to say, Mayor, though, before we end, that not only is Allison leaving, but the love of my life, her cat.
Why was I going to ask you? Who takes custody of the cats?
I know, we're finding over that. I know, which is good.
I know where I usually find a couple.
Yeah, right. I know.
So if Allison's cat shows up and lost and found.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. You know where to look.
That's right.
All right. Everybody has a good holiday, however you celebrate it. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, April 2nd at 6 o'clock, same place.
Same bathtime.
Thank you.